Is she recording?
Yes.
Good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this public hearing for the Board of Selectmen. Today is Tuesday, August 5th. It's now 7:00 PM, uh, excuse me, 6:00 PM. Can we please give the public religions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the republic, which stands in our nation under God, in the Constitution of the Constitution.
Now, do you have a copy of the notice? Shall I read the notice at the beginning of the hearing?
She has the notice.
Thank you. Right, so I'm walking. Okay, so here's the, uh, the notice of public hearing for changes, revisions to the Bethel Town Charter, Town of Bethel, Connecticut. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-191, notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen from the Town of Bethel will hold a public hearing on August 5th, 2025 at 6:00 PM, in Meeting Room A, in the Clifford J. Purge Municipal Center, 1 School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, for the purpose of hearing comments from the public regarding changes and revisions to the Bethel Town Charter, dated at Bethel, Connecticut, July 29, 2025, from the Board of Selectmen, Daniel Lee Carter, First Selectman, Brian Entersing, Selectman, and Richard C. Street, Select. So that's, that's, that's another way. Um, I'd like to open this public hearing for comments. If you would, um, plan to say your name and address when you begin. Uh, limit your comments to four minutes for now, and then we'll see if you get to a second one. Okay?
Okay.
We don't know how many people want to say five minutes. Five minutes is it? Just to start. Who's first up?
Just go.
Just go. Billy Michael, 27 and a half, Lippert Avenue. I've been making these speeches since 1988 on the charter. That was my first charter presentation, and then in 1989, we voted on it, but it was 1988. Going every four or five years. All right. I'm gonna make, stay within my timeframe. Uh, C-63B, add response option acceptable to too high, too low. I think it's foolish. I just don't see any need for the Board of Finance to know if the people think it's acceptable. Because if it's acceptable, they vote yes. The only information that the Board of Finance needs to know is why did a majority vote no? That's all I think. The only thing that matters. All the other stuff is just all, you know, how we feel about stuff. When the budget goes down because of the majority of Bethel voters say no, they've got to know whether it's too high or too low. End of the question. The rest of it is, is not, not important. Um, the, uh, C-716, recognition of sustainable Bethel. I've been around for over 30 years. I've never seen something in town that's funded by things like the Connecticut Green Bank, the Hampshire Project, and the Emily Tumane organization. These are uber-leftists. Now they're gonna be in the charter as, and it's gonna cost the town money. They didn't raise one potato this growing season. If they're so sustainable, let them raise food. No, I just think that if you're generous to have something called sustainable Bethel, we've been sustaining since 1855 without something that says sustainable Bethel. We don't need that. We definitely don't need it in the charter. Oh, it'll have its day, and then people get tired of it, and vanish, just like everything else. Changing he's she, refer, references, today, they're them. Again, I just think these are just ideas of the time. They're gonna pass. They'll pass like 55 saves lives. Remember how we all believed 55 saves lives? All these things. They have their day, and then they go away. I really don't think it deserves to be in the charter. And then, uh, to stay within my timeframe, lengthening the Board of Selectmen. I have fought every charter revision, uh, that is promoted, changing it to a four-year term I've been against. And I, I think of people who, who would have, uh, looked at a four-year term with someone like Bobby Dirk. But Bobby, imagine someone voting and saying, oh, Bobby's gonna be here for four years. The people that hated him, they wouldn't want him to win a four-year term, someone like me. I couldn't count on it having Matt Nickerbocker for four years. I wanted, and he was in here for 12. So I was a minority position on that, but at least every two years, you had a chance to change, to, to change. Um, when we see people with signs that say no change, fight tyranny and all that, the best, uh, protection against tyranny is for the ability of the electorate to get rid of somebody. And I think two years is perfect, uh, it, it perfectly suited to the whole surrounding of Connecticut. It's all two years, two years. I don't know if anybody's gotten four-year Board of Selectmen yet. But, um, I'm adamant about staying with two years, resolve the people. If they like you, we'll give you another two. They don't, you'll have to one term, and that has happened in the past. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Billy.
As Bill's wingman, I'm Cynthia McCourt-Dale, 19 Elton Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut. I will, um, go in order. I agree, I agree with Billy in terms of the too high, too low. It's, it's not about feelings, it's about finances. People might say acceptable, only because what are they gonna say if they? Doesn't even mean if they voted yes or no. Acceptable doesn't really have qualitative, um, uh, element to it. So I think too high, too low is, um, should just stay. Uh, two, two years to four years. I absolutely agree with Billy. If, if the person is doing a great job, and, and by the way, the Board of Finance has been very fair and judicious to try to get salary for the position to be, you know, acceptable. I don't think this is a career move for somebody, so if, if they want it, if they think they're going to have a meteoric rise to something from being a first selectman in the town, I mean, to me, it's like two years, two years, two years. Matt Nickerbocker was here for 12 years. They'll just, the person will just keep getting elected. So I really think that the four years is too long, and many people would say that right now about the presidential, uh, term. Um, the other thing is sustainable Bethel. I agree with Billy too, that this is, this, um, sustainable Bethel, or the concept of sustainable Connecticut, is funded by sustainable Connecticut, and they're the organizations that support that. It is political in a sense, and I don't think that there should be any commission established in the charter that has any political elements to it at all. I mean, if they wanna, you know, give out saplings and, you know, lay the trail, that's fine. Do whatever, but I just don't think it needs to be. It's like, it should be an ad hoc commission, like the Energy Commission, like other commissions that, you know, the opportunity came up, okay, we'll establish a commission. Okay, the language issue. I have to go to my English teacher, who was like a second mother to me, who was the mother of my best friends with simple grade, you know, lie, lay, laid. Anytime I have any English, I, she, he. No, absolutely not. You cannot. I mean, since beginning of English, all languages have that, um, some bifurcation. To put they, them, we, they, I don't even know what that means. I think it's very confusing, and I think that just should stay as it is, it, he, she, whatever. So that's my opinion on that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bills?
Right, sir. All right. I'm gonna lean on the chair. I don't think I fall down.
If you'd like to say, you can do that. Yeah, sure.
I observed, in my career, best I served on the Board of Finance.
Bill Gallagher.
Name and address, Phil.
Bill Gallagher, J. Philip Gallagher, Sunset Hill Road, Bethel. That's right. Um, in my time in Bethel, I, I, I've served on the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Tax Review, or whatever they call it today, and, uh, the Public Utilities Commission. Now, some of the changes I'd like to comment on. First, the expansion of the, uh, Public Utilities Commission from five to seven members. I thought about that, and I realized you're kind of spend the, spread the burden of, of, of sure of the work. But Board of Public Utilities and, and Board of Tax Review are two of the most nonpartisan boards in the town. And I'm afraid by increasing the Board of Public Utilities from five to seven members, you're going to make it more partisan. How so? Well, you're gonna have to follow the minority representation, right? And right now, you have, uh, two, most members of a party can have on a public utilities is three. And it has to be at least two of the minority party. But if you go to seven members, it will be three, you know, I, I've had to the Board of Selectmen, you'll have three of the, of one party and one of the other. You follow me? And that would make a, I think, more, a board that's not historically partisan, but has a chance of making it partisan. So I wouldn't be opposed to those reasons. I don't think there's any good reason for it. It's worked well in the past as it is. Uh, as far as extending the term of the, uh, first election to four years, I won't repeat the, the, the presentation I gave at the, uh, public hearing that if, I guess it was in late May, the, the Charter Revision Commission had. But I gave, you know, a history of elections going back to 1950 that I remembered by later time. And I pointed out, extending the, uh, term of the Board of, the first election to four years goes against what the Bethel voters have expressed in elections over the history. And I'll give you an example. In 1969, they retired a first election after one term. In 19, um, 81, they retired a first election after two election terms. 1983, the voters, and they all ran again, retired a first election after one term. In 19, uh, 2003, the voters retired a first election after two terms. And at, in 2005, they retired a first election after one term. And again, in 2009, they re, they retired a first election after two terms. And finally, in 224, again, after one term. So that's seven instances over the last 60 years roughly, where the Board of, the voters of Bethel have expressed their opinion that they want to get, they don't want somebody to stay in there too long. They want a chance to remove them. And you're, you know, I listened to the, the arguments of the, uh, the discussion of the Charter Revision Commission after the public hearing, and a couple of them were quite adamant that the, the, uh, person, you know, needs experience to grow into the job. Well, you know, I never heard anybody run for first election, and I remember elections going back to the 50s. Whoever said, you know, I don't really know the job, but give me your two to learn. I don't think they'd be electable. So I, the argument that some of them were using would apply more to a civil service employee, not an elected official. You're expected, if you run for an office first election, or select, that you know something. You've served that in another board. You know, it's not a, you, and actually, if you, you're getting, if you are hired in a department as a civil servant, you get six months. Under the current rules, you get two years. At the end of two years, you know, prove you're deserving of reelection, then you're, then you retire. And I give you the seven instances where they did retire people after one or two terms. So I don't, I think that's not a step forward. Um, you know, that, that, well. The sus, uh, sustainable Bethel, I read that, I read their minutes. I, I don't know really what they do. I, it looks like some of their issues they're dealing may cause controversy among people. I, 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 you know, I, I don't, I, I haven't had much experience observing, and I have never been to their meeting, that read their minutes, took time to read their minutes, and um, I, I don't see what their powers are or what they do. I, I would not, I think on general per principle, I'd be opposed to that because I think it would cause more mischief than not. Um, now the, the he or she gender things. I look to, where in the Charter does that talk about? Where, where are the references to he and she that they want to make there and now? I, uh, I don't see that anywhere, but maybe it's there.
I, I will comment on that. It's throughout the Charter, what that means is anywhere where it says he.
Yeah, but I thought, I, I tried to find where it says he or she.
Yeah, there are.
There's, there's a lot, huh?
Yeah.
Sprinkled around. I, I, I look, you know, pretty, I couldn't see any.
Yep, they're there.
And, and, for, you know, I read news articles, where they use this terminology today, them and they and them. And they're referring to one person, you know, somebody's, you know, perpetrator or something else. They're referring to one person, but then later on in the argument, article, they, they refer to him as them or they or something, and clearly confused, I think, but I think you should, you know, leave that out. Um, I guess that's it. Thank you for your time. If I have anything more to say, I'll get, I'll back to it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else next up?
Yeah, Nick Ellis, 13 Pond Road, Bethel. Um, I can't top these three speakers. I have a lot of respect for them. Um, it makes a lot of common sense. I'm not sure why we're changing things that don't need to be changed, but on the four-year term, I want to talk about, you know, we have a hard enough time getting people to come out and vote. On that off-year that the first election is not on the ticket, the vote count is gonna be way down. We want people to vote for our candidates, not cut them back. And I think going to a four-year just for the selectmen, I think throws off the whole cycle, so I'm against the four-year term. Thank you for your time.
Nancy Ryan, 25 Walnut Hill Road. So it looks like that we can't ask you questions either, just comments.
This is comments, public hearing.
So to, to me, in a comment, it looks like that the, uh, changes, recommended changes by the 2018 Commission are staying in place. I think that the budget question, too high, too low, adding acceptable, I think you get rid of all of it. You just vote yes or no. If you voted no, I think the Board of Finance gets the, gets the picture. I think adding something, sorry to my colleagues who are in charge of all of this, but I think adding acceptable becomes more confusing. I think I don't even like the too high, too low. Uh, Board of Selectmen, if the whole board has a four-year term, and the terms are staggered, I think that could be very interesting. And I would agree with that. Um, sustainable Bethel, I think sustainable Bethel is a commission, which was created by ordinance, putting a couple of different commissions or boards together. I think it's a great idea to have them continue, because they've been doing a lot of good work. So I think we should keep that. If we're looking at voting on charter questions as we did in the past, where there's several different questions, some of it's just all language, some of it's very specific, Board of Selection, et cetera. The people will vote, uh, whether they agree on that or not. I think, um, the Sustainable Bethel Commission is doing a lot of great work, and is going to continue to do that going forward. Obviously, there's a lot of different language things that need to get changed and updated. Definitely, we don't want to have, you know, each gender in the charter to be he, so having they, they're them, it's good. And then I noticed something as I was, and I don't know if this needs to be a change right now, as something considered in the future with language. Um, when we were looking at electing Chair First and Fourth, uh, Public Site Building Commission, I was looking through the Charter to see, as I had remembered, that we're supposed to elect a Chair, a Secretary, which seemed kind of weird. So I went back, I found that it does say in chapter 20, elect the Chair and Secretary, which we don't really elect a Secretary anymore because the town trains to try Secretaries, so all the boards and commissions are trained in FOI and Charter, what's necessary as far as doing the minute spread. So we don't have our own Secretary. Maybe back, way back, we did. I don't know, is that needs to be a change, maybe in the future. Um, but then I looked at other, I wasn't sure if that was all boards and commissions. So I found a couple other boards where it said the Board shall elect officers as necessary. So it wasn't specific as to whether you have a Chair. So what we did at Public Site last week, weeks ago, I remember, was we elected a Chair and a Vice Chair. That way, if the Chair's not available in front of meeting, the Vice Chair can be, yeah, we don't need a Secretary. But I looked at a couple of different, uh, boards and commissions, the way they're set up. Some is sort of like, uh, just do whatever you need to do, and others are more specific, and maybe there should be, again, maybe not this time around, but something, how each board and commission should have their box, so to speak. And I, I believe we're supposed to do that on a yearly basis, and that says that. Again, I was looking for Public Site, because we had to get that. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the Charter Commission for all your hard work.
Kia Murphy, 37 Lunt Lane. Um, I just want to start out by saying thank you to the Charter Commission people who did a lot of work. Thank you all for this opportunity. Um, I'm, I'm sort of new-ish to this kind of government, so it's sort of interesting to me how much public participation there is. And I think that's great. Couple of things. The four-year term, I really like the four-year term. The reason why is because I think that as, as you get into a position, um, you learn more and more about how things mechanically work. And it gives you more time to not just introduce things, but to see them through. Um, having worked in a corporate environment, um, one of the key things was never work in a job for more than, um, two to three years, because you never wanted your mistakes to catch up with you. But, 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 but what I like about the four-year term is it gives you the opportunity to trial things, to start things, and to see them all the way through. So I like the idea of the four-year term. Um, if we're going to, on the next topic, if we're gonna keep the too high, too low, one of the things I always found frustrating was, well, sometimes I don't think it's too high, I don't think it's too low. I think it's just right, kind of Goldilocks. And, uh, it's always frustrated me if you have that too high, too low, and didn't have, you know, that it was, it was just fine. So I think that's, that's certain something, um, to have at your. I also, um, I, 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 I liked a lot of the updating of the language and the titles. I think that, that was something, I mean, I, I was shocked when I moved here, we still had a data processing department, and we had a controller. I was like, wow. We're back in the 50s, 60s, and not really in the 20th century later half, much less the 21st. So I think the, the title changes make a lot of sense. Can that language change? You know, the gender neutrality of what we're trying to achieve in this, I think makes sense. Everything did read him, if I remember it correctly, throughout, or he, as opposed to he, she. The they, them, I'm fine with that, because I think, I think the point is that anyone can, of either sex can, can, can be in a position. And I think that's really what the, uh, what they were trying to solve with that. And I think those were the, the main things that I, I was most concerned about. But I, I just think that charter revision really is bringing a lot of the language and, and ways that we go about to do business that we're, we're really updating, modernizing.
Thank you. Is, is it a question for one of the folks, or is it, is it a question for one of the folks?
No, it's a comment to the, to the commission.
Okay, to the commission, okay. Yeah, I, 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 I've just, I've been trying to like bring things back to like a public hearing is really public hearing. We're not going to be like getting it back and forth. That's where I was going, but
Oh, yeah, no.
I recognize you to make comments, of course.
Um, I don't go back as far as Mr. Gallagher, but, uh, I've been involved in many kind of elections, back to the 60s, not the 50s. So, uh, and then the Board of Selectmen's always been a, a two-year thing. So, uh, I don't support the, the four-year term for the Board of Selectmen. Um, the, um, the Fire Commission, uh, are, are, is the recommendation to put it in the Charter?
Yes.
I see it, it says revise. Uh, I, I don't think the Fire Commission or the Sustainable, uh, Bethel should be, uh, in the Charter. I think you should keep them as, uh, uh, a, you know, ordinance. Uh, it's easier to make, uh, changes to it.
And, and Richie, just so you understand, we're going to, at the next meeting, we're gonna have comments to make publicly about each thing. I mean, if you want to continue to make comments about each thing, but it's really, for the public hearing, it's for their opportunity to speak to us.
Well, I, I, I don't want to, I just want to kind of, all right.
I'd rather wait until we get into debate.
All right.
Because that's gonna be in place when we're gonna debate.
All right. And I'll, I'll, um, okay.
Thank you, sir. You'll, you'll yield your time to Bill, or to Billy Michael, sir.
That we may concede.
Um, we have not, so I, but I want to make sure everybody has a chance to speak the first time around. If they're, if I haven't seen them, we'll go one more round. If somebody, and, and please, if it's something you want to add based on, you know, what you've heard, that's right. Don't, just to repeat the same thing. If you want to add more, something, that's okay. You want to, we're gonna be right next to them.
Just one more point on the four-year term. One of the most powerful things that an, an office holder has is the power of incumbency. It's probably have people in Washington, people who are older than me, they're in it. Once they're in office, they don't get them out. And then by giving a, a service a four-year term, you're giving, you're giving them the power of incumbency. At least you'd leg up to get reelected. Uh, it may mean that makes sense, but the longer they're in that, you know, people will pay attention. They haven't earned the power of incumbency like in, in Bethel. And I've said, over the years, people, as the Bethel show, they like the chance to, after two years, to vote somebody out of office if they feel they're not doing the job they want. You're, you're giving them a leg up, I've given it four years, again.
Um, Nancy Ryan again.
Yeah, me again. Not me again. So this is actually a question, which I know you can't answer, but at some point, will we know how the questions will be stated on the ballot? Because this is a lot of stuff, but some of it I know, like the lang, you know, changing language, leading up language, that could be one question, and it's just, you know, general.
Yeah.
But other things would be more specific, like four-year term to Board of Select. So that might be its own question. And at some point, all those questions will be put in place, and we'll see what they are before they end up on the ballot.
Yeah, I can explain the process. So, um, right now, what we're doing is we're actually getting a public hearing on the draft report from the Charter Revision Commission. On that hearing had to happen, I think, within 45 days. Uh, we're doing it right now, because at a certain point, it becomes final. If we don't, if we look at it, we do a hearing, we don't act on it, it becomes final. So that's what we'll decide. So that's the first piece. If we want to make changes or recommend changes back to the, uh, Charter Mission Commission, we can do that in our meeting following this. They actually meet tomorrow night, and they can make any changes we recommend. If we do not act on that by sending it back, then this draft report becomes final. So it is a final report. Then the next step is accepting the, accepting the changes or rejecting the changes entirely or one by one. And then eventually, what we'll do is we'll, we'll basically craft how we're gonna put these on the ballot. So the Board of Selectmen will say, hey, these are how we're gonna put these on the ballot in November.
So the Board of Selectmen creates the questions.
Uh, well, I think we'll have the Town Attorney, and then the Board of Selectmen will vote, will vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. So that's the process, and then it has to go to a referendum within 15 months. So what we're thinking November, I mean, that's kind of what we're striving for, is November ballot. But if, um, if for some reason we decide we recommend changes, or we either outright reject changes, but if we recommend changes, it could put us past, past a point where I think September 5th, we better have our stuff together.
That's beginning.
And if we don't have it by then, then we're probably looking in the spring for a referendum vote. It's kind of the time.
The back and forth would create a situation where you have to have separate from the, like,
Right. Which, which is fine. It's enough.
Yeah.
It's fine if we choose to do that. The Charter's important enough.
Question, they could, uh, but, but it'll go on a budget referendum if this doesn't get out of control.
We have the ability to put it on a, uh, a special or a regular referendum, so I guess it could. We have to check, but I believe we can determine whatever referendum, but once you go on according to statute.
It would have to be a certain, uh,
Yeah. Need a certain amount of percentage of the voters.
Yeah.
Because that's
So that's part of the reason you want with the referendum, because you want to drive turnout. It's also the most transparent way to put it out there, where there's a lot of people going, yeah. Was a question about process?
No, I just to add to the public input.
Oh, okay, yeah, please, please.
So
Cynthia McCourt-Dale.
Cynthia McCourt-Dale, 19 Elton Avenue, have not moved since I'm sitting here. As a person who speaks two languages, I, this would ne, this would only happen in English, because this would never happen in France. And, uh, the, the they, they, we, they, or they, them, because the nouns reflect the gender of, of, and who you're speaking to. Um, so I think you're going down the wrong path to, uh, use, um, multiple pronouns to describe singular people.
multiple pronouns to describe singular people. It's better to do he slash she than to do they. Because it, it is confusing in some ways. You know, in English, it's, it's, we don't have nouns that are based on gender. And that's why you can do this if you want to. But I think that it's just the wrong way to go, and everything, you know, since I, you know, it's not just the ghost of my high school English teacher, it's just language in general. It's really important, and I think that you're muddying waters if you start to do that. And it's nothing to do with gender as far as persons, it has to do with language.
Maybe also the second time around, first time around.
Oh, Tia Murphy, thirty-seven L. Lane. And this is sort of question-ish. These would be, you will choose things to put on the ballot. It wouldn't be a, we accept everything or we reject everything, right? It would be elements. Because I, I worry if it were, you know, an all or nothing kind of thing, that's, that's, that's kind of a problem. If I read through everything, it sounded like it would be individual items, called bundling.
Well, okay, so.
And some, some of the things might be, like, the title changes could all be grouped together or something of that sort. But, but I would hate it, and I've seen this done in other places, when things that were unpopular were wanting to get through, and then it was like, oh, you accept everything, or you accept nothing. And then the people's voice is really not heard. So I would hope that it would be some elements.
I guess different process. We have a great deal of authority to do whatever we want to create the questions, it's up to the point forty. I will say, I, I believe the questions should be reasonably spaced out and not the same thing, not all together. It just says we create the questions, it doesn't say, I mean, a good example is, years ago, the four-year term for Board of Selectmen was bundled with a five-member Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
So I, I think that we're going to work together to create something that just is transparent and not tricking for anybody. For sure, yeah.
That was, that was the biggest concern.
Sure. Any more question? I may want to speak more on the, on the process. Does everyone feel like they've been heard? That's, that is the most important part. Billy, do you want to take another round?
I'm glad you're worried about how you feel.
Yeah.
It has to feel, this is the world right now. Feel, how we feel.
I feel good about this.
Okay, feel good.
What's important, any, anything you want to add, any comments?
I'll wait until the next speaker, I appreciate it. Stated what, it's helping to hear from all sides. One of these issues, you know, to your point, we're operating these questions, so we really know what people's opinions are in each one. I think that's receiving a budget referendum. It's getting locked together, necessarily doesn't reflect the world. So I think that's, that's a good suggestion, and it's something big.
The comments for the.
Another process thing, so if you send it back to the Charter Revision Commission, they need tomorrow night, can they do their changes, so there has to be another public hearing?
Actually, no, we have, yeah, we can have one or more now. If something, if we want to have another one, it's up to the Board of Selectmen, can't have another. And I will say, thank you to the Charter Revision Commission, thank you to our Chair Director, Tim Bevel. Pat Dobbert's here, Penny Keston's here, woman, oh, Alice Hutchison here, try to think, I got everybody. And Penny, yeah, TM was not on it. But really, it was, it was a lot, you guys have been doing this for a year. So it is a lot of work, and it's really appreciated out of town. Very much so. So if there are no further things to bring before the public hearing, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's six thirty-four P. M.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a little coup.